...of the town council. Roll call, all councilors are present, Madam Mayor. Thank you. And would you please stand for the salute to the flag? Dr. Ackerman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would just ask that everybody in the chamber, please silence your devices. It gets picked up on camera and then people yell at us, but it's not our phones. All right, we are on to recognition awards and memorials, and I don't believe there are any. So, on to receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond, thank you, during the responses to citizens' petition portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern and state their names and addresses for the record. And we do have a few people signed up to speak this evening. So, first on the list is Perry Watson, followed by Michael Knoll.
That's my first time for this. I was at a public hearing. I'm Perry Watson. I live at 175 Shenacosta Parkway in Groton. And after looking at your agenda tonight, I'm glad that I'm here for this and I can leave it. You have a pretty long agenda tonight. I'm here to speak about the Boulder Heights property. I was here at the public hearing last week, and there was a lot of things said that kind of got my curiosity up. So, I took a walk. I drove to the end of Culver Avenue or Street, or whatever it is, and got out of my truck and I took a walk. And there was some comments about it's all riddled with boulders and, yeah, there's some boulders there, the first 50 yards or so, they put some boulders there. But once you get beyond that first little stretch, it's a beautiful piece of property. There's lots of boulders on the property too, but I believe they're all glacier deposits, which is kind of a natural thing and a valuable thing in itself. And so, and there was some talk about the value of the property. You all know the appraised values, I don't have to repeat that. But there's other ways to value property. I can tell you, in the early 90s, I was the chairperson of the open space committee here on the town council. And one of the things we looked at back then was the value of property compared to where it is in our town, because everybody in the town is entitled to open space in their backyard, if possible. And if you look at the northwestern corner of town, which Boulder Heights happens to be in, there's very little open space. As a matter of fact, in 1993, we walked a piece of property called the Perry property, which is up behind Charles Barnum School, and we recommended that the council buy it with that open space money that was available back then, but it got voted down. So, if you look at the Boulder Heights property, which is really a beautiful piece of property, it's full of mature oak trees, there's wetlands, it's pretty open to walk through, very easy to get around, there's paths there already. It's right in the backyard of two pieces of property that a lot of Groton residents live in. There's some condominiums right near Culver Avenue ends, and there's some other, I don't know if they're condominiums or apartments on the left side that should go down, but the property extends all the way behind along 95, and it comes out, the back of it borders the ledges. And look at how many people live in the ledges that can enjoy that piece of open space. So, what I'm saying is, the value of that property and its proximity, it's a lot more valuable, in my opinion, than was painted here last Tuesday by a bunch of the speakers. And mind you, I think if you look at Mark Othinger and Stevens was the man from the DEEP that reviewed this and tried to find comparables for where the school was proposed. Matter of fact, we tried to say that maybe the Crystal Lake Road or the Crystal Lake property was one that the DEP ought to consider as a swap for the merit property, and that the DEEP didn't. I think we'd already bought it at that point, so it really was, you know, after the fact. But this piece of property, which I said is in proximity in the northwest kind of corner of town, is an important piece of property, is very valuable, and I would say that the people that live around there would say the same thing. And that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors, for listening to me, and I'll sign off.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Michael Knoll, followed by Gretchen Chipparini.
Hello, Michael Knoll, 101 Williams Street.
Hello, I apologize.
Pardon?
I apologize for mispronouncing.
Oh, sorry. I just want to talk about the land swap also. I'm against it. I think we made a deal to purchase it and keep it as open space. I don't think we should back out on our promise to keep it as open space. I like it the way it is right now, and I hope you guys agree that we should keep our word and keep it open. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Gretchen Chipparini, followed by Portia Bordalun.
Oh, well, just water.
Thank you. Excuse me.
I'll let you finish.
Could you please state your name and address?
I will.
Thank you.
Gretchen Chipparini, 87, Phoenix Drive. And I'm here to talk to you about the formation of TIF districts, which I think you're going to be coming up on real soon. I want to start by telling you, the three largest districts in Groton are by contribution to the grand list are, according to Mary Gardner, her and I worked on this, Mystic Area, 38 million point six, Long Hill Road, 89 million, Route 12, 94 million, and Route 184 doesn't even come into play where 117 and 184 intersect. So, the Route 12 area is clearly our most successful business district, and is the reason why retailers will pick it over and over, and it's why the big stores are all there. And strangely, and I know this isn't official yet, we are being overlooked in that district as a TIF district. I know you haven't selected them yet, but you will be. It's all about location, location, location. I don't know if all of you know how retailers go about it, they form a committee, and that committee is very hard to get to when you want to propose your project, and they go by numbers. It's all numbers. And the typical criteria, and you can look in the last part of my booklet, I gave you two Stop &amp; Shop and another grocery store. And they typically are per household income, which Groton, by the way, doesn't do very well on, daily traffic counts on the road in front of the property, visibility and easy on up of a major highway. Route 184, the Five Corners and Fame Street will never fulfill these requirements. Truthfully, only Route 12 can meet these parameters by any national chains. So, it's all numbers, they don't come here because they have a passion for Groton. The owner of the 184 site, who I saw by video, he wants to put office space in. That is, we know from the Kamoin study, there is no demand here for office space, and we're going to be investing, that's what he asked for, TIF money for the office space. We've asked Pfizer and EB if they need office space, they have said no. TIF has nothing to do with assuring that a project is going to be successful. You can't, TIF is not going to turn a sow's ear into a silk purse, it is not a golden bullet, especially if you're going to put it towards a project that has no chance of success. So, I know that Kamoin was a major contributor to choosing the TIF districts, and I'd like to know what their criteria are, do those criteria match up with what retailers ask for? They better, and I think you should ask that question of them, what they use, because if they didn't use what retailers do, we're not going to get them to go here, no matter what TIF is. So, truly, all of Groton doesn't meet all the requirements, especially the per capita household, none of us do, but Route 12 probably meets all the other requirements. So, I'm going to bring up that the guy who came here on 184, he's had this property for 10 years, he doesn't go by any major highway, that's what they want, they want visibility to a major highway, 184 will never, you can't move it. I don't know if you remember Kurt Schilling's, the baseball player's video, he started a company called 38 Studios in Rhode Island, the state of Rhode Island gave him $75 million. It didn't mean he was going to be successful, he lost it all. So, remember that. Poor concepts does not guarantee success, even with TIF. John Reiner's told me that he can only create a TIF district where there's already a master plan. Well, Long Hill Road doesn't have a master plan, no developer that I know, Five Corners has no developer or master plan, Fame Street has no developer or master's plan, and I think it's only fair that all parts of Groton have equal opportunity. I want to plant that idea. Why shouldn't all of Groton be a TIF district? You know, and that's really how you should be looking at this.
You have one minute?
Okay, I'm not opposed to TIF at all. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I am opposed to it not being equally applied to all of Groton and letting everyone apply, and it's first come, first served, and you folks decide who gets it. That's the way it should be, and it should not be limited to one part of Groton. And I'm also going to comment, Kohl's, Walmart, Stop &amp; Shop, they aren't going to be very happy if Big Y gets TIF, and they don't, and we don't want them breathing down our neck, believe me. You have a COW meeting coming up, I believe, in two weeks, and I'd like our area to be included in that. I'd like to hear our issues, our sewage is antiquated, our buildings are antiquated too, and we want to discuss that with you, and we should be given that chance as the other parts of Groton have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Portia Bordalun.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, for having us here tonight. I first want to start off by saying that I'm really excited about TIF. I think TIF is fresh, new, exciting, a lot of areas don't have it. I'm excited to see where it could take us. I will say that I have concerns only with regards to how it is written, making sure that, however that document, that final policies or procedures is drawn up, that it actually is written in a way that's looking at all aspects to making sure that we have viable people applying and that those governing things are being protected. In regards to the merit property and the Boulder property, first I'd like to say, and it's not a pointing of the finger, it's simply, how did we get to this point? And moving forward, I would like for this to go through, but I have concerns moving on with having TIF and different things in this community. If we can't get this right, what are other projects going to look like? So, I hope that at the end of this, once we hopefully pass this, that we make sure this doesn't happen again, and we find a way in which that we can make sure that all of these things are really looked at before we get to this point of, you know, and I know you're new council, but what you were handed in the end, you know, and now you guys are digging through it, which I can appreciate your due diligence in that. But I just have concerns about where did we miss the ball here? How do we improve? How do we learn from this to make sure that in the future that, you know, this doesn't happen again, and we're not sitting here trying to dig ourselves out? With that being said, I'm hoping that with the merit property, like I said, that it does go through, and maybe on that property, since the school is not going to be built on all of the acreage there, that a portion of it could be used and conserved, maybe 10 acres would be great learning environment for children to be able to have some type of nature, cross-country, so maybe taking a piece of that property and agreeing to not use it for development might be another avenue. My last piece is in regards to the school. And I'll just read this quickly and I'll hand this in. Regarding the Board of Education's budget process and product, I'd like to see the policies governing such come under critical review and revision. I believe that there should be much more transparency in both the workshop and the drafting process, as well as the final document produced, which should be available and widely distributed in its fully expanded form. What I mean by this is, if you ask for the budget, you get the budget, and you got 100s, 200s, 3s, 6s, you don't know what's under them. It should be fully expanded and able for anybody in the community to access that. Let it be online, where you click and expand, and to be able to see and access all of that information to the whole community. Currently, only one meeting per month is televised, while none of the workshops or supplement meetings are documented on video or broadcast. When contrasted with the RTM and the town council, both of whose meetings are essentially all broadcast and available online, it seems to be striking discrepancy that the Board of Education, whose budget consists almost 75 percent of the total town budget, has one meeting televised per month. Now, this doesn't mean that I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, this doesn't mean that I'm thinking anything's wrong or what they're doing. I feel that there should be more transparency so people can access this information. I just feel that for the sake of the town, taxpayers, elected officials, and parents, people cannot attend to all these meetings, and I feel it should be a simple fix. Why aren't they broadcasted? Other towns do it, at least 50 percent, if not more. And this would really help in this town for people to really understand what they are doing, the hard work that they're doing, as well as areas that they want to question or they have concerns about, versus seeing the final product when they come to a two-point before increase, really seeing how that got worked out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are on to item number five, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Do any councilors have responses? Certainly. If you could just state your name and address, please?
Absolutely. Yeah, my name is Craig Kohler, I live at 263 Brook Street in Groton. Like Harry Watson before me, I wanted to speak to some things that were said at the last hearing in regards to the process of choosing the merit property in Boulder Heights. There were comments that were submitted last week that were said, and I quote, "The merit property was property grabbed for a school under the shroud of darkness." The shroud of darkness? I don't think so. Give me a break. The school task force had dozens of meetings where this was openly discussed. We had presentations with the town council where it was openly discussed. We met with the RTM when it was openly discussed. There were two public hearings in May 21st and 28th of 2016 about the land conversion. An article was published in the day, June 17th of 2016, regarding the land conversion, and 53 percent of the voters voted on November 8th of 2016 for the school project and its location. This was hardly a covert operation. You all had ample time to come forward at any of these meetings, and you did not further. You know, the deep open space land conversion has policies and procedures that were followed by the town, they were spelled out in the memorandum of understanding of the town. I'm glad you guys are going to do your due diligence, do what you need to do. I urge you, after you've done that, to please, you know, vote for this and to put it through. One of the things in that, in those policies, it says, "The process for dealing with conversions is a long and complicated one that takes considerable time, usually a minimum of six months and perhaps as long as a year or two." But we don't have that kind of time right now. We need to keep moving forward with this school project, or we are going to set the town back. To me, what we're trying to do is to develop a piece of land for the betterment of everybody in this town, not for one small group. The project that we're talking about doing is developing a school. We're not talking about a toxic waste dump, a school with recreational facilities that will be for the betterment of all the kids in this town and for the town. And it shows development by us in our own town. You can talk about TIF all you want, but if we don't take the time to want to invest in our own town, who's going to want to invest with us? That's like going to somebody who weighs 375 pounds and saying they're going to teach you how to lose weight. Please, I urge you, do your due diligence, but please see this through, pass the land conversion. We have come so far, and we have so much at stake to not be held hostage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. Before we go on, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, now we are on to response to citizens' petitions, and Counselor Schmidt, did you have something you wanted to say? Are there any responses to citizens' petitions? Seeing none, we are on to the consent calendar, and these are moved by one motion. Is there a motion to move the consent calendar? Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Obray. All those in favor of moving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously.
I wasn't here for the meeting on the 6th, so.
Do you wish to abstain?
Yes.
All right. On to Roman numeral seven, communications and reports other than committee reports. So, town councilors, we'll start with Councilor Moravcik.
Nothing to report.
Counselor Parker, do you have any communications?
Nothing to report.
Well, I have things to report. I went to the EDC meeting. I attended a class with members from the EDC called the Crash Course in Economic Development and Planning, which was suggested by Paige Bronk, and what I heard there was what the town is already doing, so I was very happy about that. I went to a conservation meeting last night. They're working on updating the Grotons Conservation Book, which was last updated in 1990, and I was surprised to hear that they have not been called upon in many years from a town council for any input. I also had met with some citizens who were concerned about the merit property swap, not so much that they're worried about the school being built there, but they have issues with the Boulder property.
Counselor He?
On March 1st, I attended part of the EDC meeting, but I left before it was finished, and I went to the permanent school building committee meeting, which was also located here at the town hall annex. And they went through a whole presentation of the school building and how it's being designed in the current location, and it was very, very enlightening, very interesting. And then Saturday, I did hike the Boulder property as well, and I thought it was a beautiful piece of property. There were a lot of boulders in front, but if you go around the other side, you can get right in.
Thank you. Counselor Obray?
I attended the EDC meeting, and they're doing a very nice outreach program to businesses in the area. The members are going out, asking the same questions of the businesses to try to get a feel for what they feel is helpful, what they feel is not helpful, and if any of you have a business in Groton, I hope you'll reach out to them, make it a little bit easier. But they've got a very, very active EDC. It's wonderful to see. They have a great cheer in Catherine Young, and the outgoing cheer, they, correct, I always say that wrong, but they are very, very active, and I think you'll be hearing from them.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater?
On March 1st, I went to a Council of Connecticut Municipalities meeting on cost-saving strategies, and this morning I was at the Child First Groton meeting on the leadership table.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt?
On Wednesday, February 28th, I did go to the meeting at Town Manager John Byrd's office, that was their Senator Murphy's aide, Emily Boucher, was there to advise how the senator could help the town of Groton, what our needs were, and urging us to utilize the senator's office. And then on March 2nd, I did participate in Read Across America at Catherine Kolnasky and read to a preschool class, which was really just adorable. And they even served green eggs and ham, so everyone had a great time. I did get four emails supporting the middle schools in the swap of the property, one supporting the Groton library's request for funds, and another one that suggested that we think twice about the Boulder Court boulders and see if we can somehow get some way to have these removed and taken to the coast and used as barriers for the coastal sea rise. And I thought that that was a very interesting concept and one that we should really look at and see if that's viable. That was all.
I received the same email. I spent a few hours in the past week talking to various members of our community regarding the merit property in Boulder Heights swap. All of them seemed to be in favor of it, of those who contacted me and spent time with me were in favor of it, and were in favor of developing the new middle school on the merit property. That's my week.
Thank you. I received many of the same emails, and I heard from many people in the community about the merit boulder swap as well. Additional things, I was asked by our two representatives from Groton, Dela Cruz and Conley, they thought it would be a good idea to appoint someone from Groton to the Connecticut Airport Advisory as airport authority as a liaison, so that that person could attend meetings and report back to the council. So, I am appointing Al Valenti, who is Chair of the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce, and he will be attending those meetings up at Bradley Airport on a monthly basis, and then reporting back to us with information. In addition to that, something interesting from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Government. Connecticut's unique that we don't have county government. Most states have county government, so our COGS are starting to act in that way. And I found it was interesting, just on the 21st of February, they moved to ask Ben Barnes, our OPM guy, to have our COGS recognized as county equivalents. What that will do is that will allow the COGS to apply for certain federal funding that is normally only available to counties. So, that was, that could be a plus for us. And I just have to speak up about something that was in our flyer. There is two calls for help from the community. On Monday, March 26th, at the Groton Senior Center, they're having a fresh produce drive. So, there is, I will post this on Facebook, but it is online as well, the Town Managers' report. And Marge Fondula, our Director of Human Services, also just put forth a request, they need supplies at the food locker in Groton as well. Everybody tends to help with the holidays, and then after the holidays are done, people forget about it. So, if you can spare anything, you can drop the items off at Human Services, which is right next to Groton Utilities, just down the road here. And that's it. So, clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The March 14th regularly scheduled RTM meeting has been canceled due to lack of business. They are only required to meet twice a year unless they have business. So they are going to have a, on May 26th, they're going to have a special meeting for any member that, it's not required, but for any member who cares to attend a budget orientation session. So the budget book will be in their hands by that point, so it makes a lot of sense to have orientation at that point.
That's great. Clerk of the Council?
I've received a lot of information regarding the upcoming legislative session, and I'm forwarding as much information to you. I'm a little concerned with a couple pieces of legislation. There's Senate bills, one that actually originated from the Secretary of State's office. And I am writing testimony to submit for the March 9th public hearing. And that is actually a bill that will allow one day, justice of the peace, citizens to apply to the Secretary of State's office to be a justice of the peace for one day, to marry someone special. In other words, they could perform the service of matrimony. And the reason why I'm opposed to it is because, you know, marriage is very sacred. And we've, in this state, we've already made it very easy to get married. There's no waiting period. You just have to be 18 and show ID. There's no scrutinization at all about, you know, are you sure you want to do this? And so we rely on our officiants to take over in that respect. And so we have dedicated people in that profession, from justice of the peace from our town, that are vetted by our political parties and by the process of election, and also our clergy. So I just, I think that it's something that we shouldn't just lightly allow just because Massachusetts does, you know? And that's really one of the reasons why our state is considering it. So perhaps you can read my information and sign my petition.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Sorry, quick question. You said RTM's going to have a special meeting on?
On the 26th, Monday, the 26th, here at 6:30.
But you said May 26th, I just want to clarify. Yes.
I wrote down May, wow.
Long day, March 26th, Monday, March 26th, 6:30. Community Room 2.
May 26th, they're going to be in the thick of it.
They'll be finished, May 25th. May 25th is the last day they can meet on the budget, so they'll be finished with the budget by May 26th. Thanks for pointing that out.
Town manager, any to report?
No, I was going to mention a couple things you did, but no other report.
And any department heads that wish to speak now? Cindy gone? Thank you.
I thought it was something I should have. This is a little off the subject of the things we're talking about tonight, but I don't know if everybody's aware of the fact that they're trying to change the tax when you sell your house. They're trying to put a tax on the seller. We have a tax now, I mean, they're trying to put a tax on the buyer. We have a tax now on the seller. Groton has an extra tax on the seller. And now Hartford wants to put a tax on the buyer. And there really is, you know, one way or the other. But I think people should be aware of that and perhaps follow it and hopefully let your representatives know your opposition to that. It's very costly now, tax-wise, when you sell your property, and it'll double the amount.
Thank you. Committee reports, personnel and appointments, Chairman Heed?
We actually, normally the meeting would be right before the Town Council, but we changed the meeting to be in between Cow meetings or council meetings that we can speed up the process, so I have no report.
Thank you. And temporary rules, Chairman Heed?
For temporary rules, we did complete the first, well, we completed the draft of the rules and those have been turned in, so they'll be presented for discussion at the next Cow meeting.
Thank you. And Committee of the Whole, we met and we will be meeting again in the minutes. We'll be available online. All right, we are on to item number nine, new business. This is items 2016-0256 and 2017-0298, which are considered together. And we have been asked to have a brief conversation with our attorney regarding due diligence.
All right, so I make a motion to move, or I make a motion to add an executive session to the agenda for purposes of discussing potential or pending claims and/or litigation involving construction of the middle school on the Merritt property.
Moved by Heed, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye. Opposed, and I'll get abstentions, so moved unanimously. So we are in executive session. Thank you. We're back in session and we are on to a series of appointments, so I'll turn this over to Counselor Heed, please.
All right. So hereby it is resolved that Paul Bates be reappointed to the Harbor Management Commission for a term ending September 1st, 2020. Francis Crowley, Francis L. Crowley, be reappointed to the Harbor Management Commission for a term ending September 1st, 2020. That Edward H. Eckelmeier is hereby reappointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a term expiring May 24th, 2020. That Scott Russo is hereby reappointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring December 31st, 2022. That Barbara Williams is hereby reappointed to the Inland Wetlands Agency for a term expiring December 31st, 2019. That Eunice Sutpin, and I'm sorry, I've mispronounced that, is hereby reappointed to the Inland Wetlands Agency for a term expiring December 31st, 2019. That Barbara Block is hereby reappointed to the Inland Wetlands Agency for a term expiring December 31st, 2018. That James Mitchell is hereby reappointed to the Board Assessment of Appeals for a term ending December 31st, 2020. That A. Neil Brown Jr. is hereby reappointed to the Shellfish Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2021. That Hallie Keeler is hereby appointed to the Library Board for a term ending December 31st, 2020. That Susan Marquatt is hereby reappointed as a member of the Zoning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2021. That Barbara Tarbox is hereby appointed as a regular meeting member, or regular member, previously an alternate member to the Planning Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2021. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Moravcik. Is there any discussion on the series of appointments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointments as read by Counselor Heed, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. 2017-0290, the Town Attorney Appointment, Counselor Moravcik?
Resolution, appointing the Town Attorney. Whereas the Town Council has considered the needs of the town for legal advice, the nature of the litigation currently underway, and the cost and the quality of the legal services not being provided, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the Town Charter, Section 8-2-1, Ellen Duggan of the firm Sussman, Shapiro, Wool, Brennan, Ray and Greensburg PC is hereby appointed Town Attorney to exercise all powers and duties of that office until her successor shall be appointed and qualified. And that the following attorneys from Sussman and Shapiro may assist Ellen Duggan in carrying out their duties. And there's a list of attorneys, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Moravcik and seconded by Heed. Is there any discussion on the appointment of the Town Attorney? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2017-0290, the appointment of the Town Attorney, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Counselor Parker, 2017-0296, the Thomas Road Project Update, please.
Resolution, authorizing cancellation of the federally funded Thomas Road Bike Way project. Whereas Thomas Road is a 3,400 linear foot road located between the intersection of High Rock Road, Tower Avenue and Shenandoah Casette Road. And whereas in 2003, the town made application to the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, COG, for consideration of this project for funding from the federal TE-21 enhancement funds and was awarded funding 80% federal and 20% local for right-of-way acquisition and construction with the town funding 100% of the permitting and design. And whereas the project design includes a 10-foot wide...
By two minutes?
By two minutes, thank you. Multi-use path and a 100-foot long boardwalk over Birch Plain Creek. And whereas the town has been working to implement this project for over 15 years and has been consistently frustrated by complex permitting requirements, easement acquisition negotiations, federal funding issues and escalating costs. And whereas the current cost estimate of 2.2 million does not include the cost of the golf course fencing, remediation of contaminated soil or the Groton Utilities relocations. And whereas the Director of Public Works has proposed in lieu of the 10-foot wide separate multi-use path, that the road be resurfaced, adding in width enough pavement to result in two travel lanes and a four-foot wide shoulder on each side of the road from High Rock/Tower Avenue to the existing culvert crossing of Birch Plain Creek. And whereas this alternative can be accomplished using appropriated local funding, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council directs the Town Manager to prepare the necessary documents to cancel the federally funded Thomas Road Bike Way project and to notify the state, the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments and the City of Groton of this action, I so move.
Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Obray. Is there any discussion? Counselor Parker?
I'm concerned that we initially, when we looked at this in the Committee of the Whole, we were told that this would still be 80% funded by federal funds, this widening of the road, and 20% by Groton Town Funds. At least that was my impression. And now it's going to be wholly funded by Groton Town Funds?
Mr. Public Works Director Schneider is here. Would you like to come up and address that? While he's coming up, I just wanted to state that the reason why this is being put aside for now is because of the high cost. It would be a lovely project to do if things were different financially, but we don't have the money to do this. So the Public Works Director has come up with a solution to make it a safer road for pedestrians and bicyclists that is much more reasonable, at a much more reasonable cost. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
I think I might too, answer the Counselor's question. No, these would be just local funds. The funds that the town has already appropriated, either through LoSeP or the capital improvement programs or LoSeP and the state funds, or there'd be a second referral coming to the Town Council at their next meeting, Committee of the Whole, is to use, or actually use the bond resurfacing funds that we have in hand, have appropriated, ready to use local funds. So bottom line, it's 100% local funded. It is not, it can't be funded with the federal funds. It's an earmark and would have to put in a 10-foot wide path.
And I remember when we discussed this at the Committee of the Whole, it would be about $300,000 to simply resurface the road?
It's about 325, that's correct, about 300,000.
And it's 400 and how much, 440 to 440,000 dollars to do the widening and the surfacing, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a little bit, it's about 430,000 dollars to do the widening, because we're adding some pavement width to the area, but it's all within the local funding that we do have that's been appropriated.
I'm still disturbed by the fact that we don't have any data to show us what the pedestrian bicycle use is of that road. I know there's a lot of pedestrian, I live in the area, and I know there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on Shenandoah Casette Road, on Beach Pond Road, on Shore Avenue. But as I drive down Thomas Road every day, I don't see any pedestrian or bicycle traffic on it at all. And I drive down that road at least once a day. And I'd like to know if we're spending money on a project that really doesn't have a necessity, that is widening the road. The road is wide enough now for vehicular traffic. It's just a question of it being wide enough to accommodate all heavy use by pedestrian and bicycle traffic as well.
There is some widening, you are right there, and the road is wide enough to be done. We have to resurface the road while we're there. It's just cost-effective to add that shoulder in. It's going to be marked as a bike lane, but like anything, in case a car breaks down or a person wants to walk on the road, or if there's someone actually cycling on the road or rollerblading, they will have an area that's four feet wide on either side. So it's not only for the use of that type of traffic, but if there's a car breakdown right now, there really is no shoulder that the car can actually pull over or vehicle could pull over and get out of a portion of the travel line. So it can be used for multiple things, but you're right, there is no count. I don't know how we would get a counter unless we put a person there with a clipboard and...
Stick up a video camera and let it count the traffic that goes by, the pedestrian traffic goes by. It'd be very easy to do. There would be, I mean, but it just seems that if we're going to do this to Thomas Road, why aren't we doing it to the other roads in the town? Certainly the bicycle traffic and the pedestrian traffic on Shenandoah Casette Road, for instance, where there is no sidewalk, would justify putting in a sidewalk. But to widen a road that doesn't really need to be widened for the vehicular use, only for presumptive use by bicyclists and to spend $140,000 of taxpayers' money on that seems to me to be not a good idea.
Counselor Obray?
I know Joe gets upset with me, but I don't agree with him. But I couldn't disagree with him more. You know, four times a year, the Rotary goes down to clean that road. And I'm going to tell you, you're taking your life in your hands when you're picking up stuff going along the side of the road. And in many places where we're cleaning it, we have to wait till there's no traffic. There's absolutely no extra space on that road. And I also disagree with the use of it. I know the people in Branford Manor and the condos and that whole area, they use that road all the time. They might be walking, they might be biking, whatever. And I think quite often, they're probably enjoying themselves, because we probably pick up 100 nip bottles. But over and above that, it's a very dangerous road, very dangerous. And I can't encourage enough that it be widened.
Counselor Parker?
I respectfully disagree, because I'm one of the people that drive down that road and there are a lot of people who walk that road, where to the point where I have to move over so I don't hit someone while they're either riding their bicycle or walking or on their little moped or fishing, because they do come down there and fish a lot. So it's a dangerous area and it does need to be widened. I'm afraid that one day, someone's going to get hurt. So it would be better to widen the road for the protection of all the people that go down Thomas Road, not just, sometimes visitors come down that way and take a turn to go down to Yukon Avery Point, too. So I know that route, road is used every day, because I'm one of the ones that drives it, like at least four times.
Counselor Moravcik and then the Town Manager wishes to speak?
Gary, the subsurface of that road, you going to check that, make sure that it's sampled? Because it might be built on sand.
There's several testments that we had to do for the bike way, so we've done it in that area. There's some good material. What we'll do is we will reclaim the road. Bottom line, we took all the asphalt out, there, we rotor-tillered it in. And if there are any soft spots that's left over from the process, we actually take that out and bring the good processed gravel in. So if you find a sandy spot or something that looks like too boney, too much rock in it, we do take that material out. We have a stockpile of stuff from other roads, bring it in and compact it, but absolutely.
Thank you.
Town Manager?
Just to mention, the Planning Department had told me that a jogger was hit and killed a number of years ago on that road.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, when all this started, the RTM appropriated the money years ago for this project.
I also use that road multiple times per day. And I know what's the scariest thing to me is not so much the pedestrians and the bikers, but the women with the baby carriages along the side of the road. That's, it's very nerve-wracking and they're trying to get to and from the retail stores. And the road needs to be repaved anyway. We've been holding off on the repavement of the road. It's in horrible condition. And if we can accommodate safety needs while we're repaving it, I think it's a good use of funds. So I will be supporting this. Are there any other people who wish to address this? Counselor Franco?
Mr. Schneider, how long have we been working on this?
I myself, since 1990.
So we've been working on it a long time and this could just solve it?
This would solve it if, once the council authorizes the funding source, whether it be the local road bonds or if we take our CIP projects and reallocate the money, that'll take our team approval, too. We are planning on going in there this spring. We'll hit some roads in Groton Long Point first, and then this will be the next road.
And one final question. Will this, the amount we spend now, save us money than the route we go with the state, the 20%?
I would say absolutely, because the state's requirements for the boardwalk and for all the items that have to be constructed to their standards, it is a higher... the items that have to be constructed to their standards, it is a higher, it's a higher standard than we have. And I don't mean in durability or safety in that, but it's what they require for road bed and everything else. It's just built to a higher standard that's not required out there.
And fencing and, don't we have bedding?
Well, there's the golf course fencing, then we have to pay for the easements, there's all those funds in there.
And it is a source of egress as well, I forgot to mention that, for the south end of the city. It's one of the two routes of egress to get out in case of an emergency, so it's important that it be handled properly. If there's no further discussion, then I will call for a vote on 2017-0296, Thomas Road Project Update. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eight to one, any abstentions, I'm sorry. Eight to one, yes. And the opposition was, Councillors, a pair. So we are on to the introduction of the illicit stormwater discharge ordinance, and it's a quite lengthy ordinance, and we have the resolution for the public hearing. Councillor Franco, please.
Resolution setting a public hearing on illicit stormwater discharge ordinance, resolve that the Town Council will hold a public hearing on an illicit stormwater discharge ordinance on Tuesday, April 3, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall Annex, Community Room One. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Is there any discussion on the resolution setting the public hearing for the illicit stormwater discharge ordinance? Seeing none, all those in favor of setting the public hearing for the discharge ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0016, the Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Councillor Heed?
Resolution adopting the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017. Whereas the Town of Groton has historically experienced severe damage from natural hazards, and it continues to be vulnerable to the effects of those natural hazards profiled in the 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, e.g. flooding, high wind, thunderstorms, winter storms, earthquakes, dam failure, and wildfires resulting in loss of property and life, economic hardship, and threats to public safety and health. Whereas the Groton Town Council approved the previous version of the plan in 2012. Whereas the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, of whom the Town of Groton is a member, has developed and received conditional approval from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA for its Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017 under the requirements of 44 CFR 201.6. And whereas committee meetings were held and public input was sought in 2016 and 2017 regarding the development and review of the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017. And whereas the plan specifically addresses hazard mitigation strategies and plan maintenance procedures for the Town of Groton, and whereas the plan recommends several hazard mitigation actions that will provide mitigation for specific natural hazards that impact the Town of Groton with the effect of protecting people and property from loss associated with those hazards. And whereas the adoption of this plan will make the Town of Groton eligible for funding to alleviate the impacts of future hazards, now therefore be it resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Groton that, one, the plan is hereby adopted as an official plan of the Town of Groton; two, the respective officials identified in the mitigation strategy of the plan are hereby directed to pursue implementation of the recommended actions assigned to them; three, future revisions and plan maintenance required by 44 CFR 201.6 and FEMA are hereby adopted as part of this resolution for a period of five years from the date of this resolution; and four, an internal and annual report on the progress of the implementation elements of the plan shall be presented to the Town Council, I so move.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I call for a vote on 2018-0016, the Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-0024, the Joint Land Use Study Memorandum of Understanding. Councillor Overy? Yes, please.
Resolution author, yeah, came to read tonight. Memorandum of Understanding and Grant Application for the Implementation of the Joint Land Use Study of the Subbase New London. Whereas the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, in conjunction with the federal government, prepared a joint land use study of the subbase New London. And whereas the study was a community-driven cooperative strategic planning process among Subbase New London and the municipalities of Town of Groton, Town of Waterford, Town of Ledger, City of Groton, City of New London, and Town of Monville. And whereas the imple, hold me, say it for me.
Implementation?
Thank you. The study will promote community development that is compatible with the military training, testing, and operational missions, and seek ways to reduce operational impact on adjacent lands. And whereas the study recommended a number of key implementations strategies, including the signing of a memorandum of understanding and applying for a grant fund from the Office of Economic Adjustment. And whereas, the goal of the study will serve the needs of the town, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding to coordinate and implement the 2017 Joint Land Use Study, and it be it further resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager, John Byrd, or his designee, to apply for grants to implement the land joint use study. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Overy, seconded by Morosik. Is there discussion on the Joint Land Use Study Memorandum of Understanding? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2018-0024, Joint Land Use Study Memorandum of Understanding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so carried unanimously. We are on to 2018-0025, Supplemental Appropriation for Crystal Lake Road Reconstruction Project. Councillor Atwater, please.
Resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation and signing of the first supplemental project agreement for Crystal Lake Road reconstruction. Whereas the Town Manager has received the first supplemental project authorization letter from the State Department of Transportation for the construction of Crystal Lake Road. And whereas the state has now estimated the total construction cost to be six million two hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. And whereas the demand deposit required for the town is now six hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. And whereas the demand deposit previously made by the town was five hundred, five hundred thousand five hundred dollars. And whereas the balance of the demand deposit required for the town is a hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. And whereas the Finance Director has determined that there are sufficient funds in the fund balance of the Capital Reserve Fund, now therefore be it resolved that a supplemental appropriation of a hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars be made from the Capital Reserve Fund balance for the new fiscal year ending in 2018 capital project. Reconstruction of Crystal Lake Road, numbered 5504F, and the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager to sign the first supplemental project authorization letter upon approval of the supplemental appropriation by the RTM. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion on the supplemental appropriation for Crystal Lake Road? Just as a reminder to those of you watching at home and seemingly rubber stamping everything, we've gone through this in great depth at our committee at the Hall, so that's why this is a quick formal process. If there's no discussion, then we will vote. All those in favor of 2018-0025, supplemental appropriation for Crystal Lake Road Reconstruction Project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0043, Department of Education Youth and Family Services Funding. Councillor Schmidt, please.
Resolution authorizing the Town Manager to apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Education for fiscal year ending 2019 Youth and Family Services Funding. Whereas crisis intervention, prevention, and support programs and short-term counseling services will benefit at-risk Groton youth and their families. And whereas funding is available from the State of Connecticut Department of Education to supplant a portion of the salaries of Groton Human Services Counselors who provide intervention and prevention services for at-risk Groton youth, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Manager, John M. Byrd, or his designee, is authorized to file an application with the State of Connecticut Department of Education, DOE, for the fiscal year ending 2019 Municipal Youth Services Funding in an amount to be determined by the Department of Education, and to amend contractual agreements for such funding to ensure continuation of short-term counseling, crisis intervention, and prevention and support programs for Groton youth and families. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Heed. All those, is there any discussion? I apologize. I know Director Fondulis is here, if there are questions. Councillors, a pair.
You may remember that when this was presented at the Committee of the Hall, I objected to this, because it appeared that there was no evidence of its efficacy. Since that time, I received an email from our Town Manager, who points out that the Director of the Youth Counseling has indicated that they do not follow up from year to year with the clients that they've had. However, there are anecdotal indications of the efficacy of this thing, this program. The individual clients establish goals at the commencement of the program, or what they were hoped to achieve through the program. And at the conclusion, very often, they perform better in school, and their parents are indicating an improvement in their activity. There is a claim for ninety-five percent success rate in attainment of counseling goals. That is impressive, if in fact someone has done a careful look to see if there was a ninety-five percent, and what percent did not achieve their goals. I'm disappointed that the counselors are not following up. I doubt that you can intervene in the course of the life of a young person who has had difficulty adjusting to society and following society's rules, intervene over a short period of time, and then turn them loose without following up again. I think they need some kind of sustained interest to keep them on the path that they've started. But that being said, I'm withdrawing my objection to this motion. I am, however, very tepidly endorsing it. There is another principle involved, and that is the principle of taxation. When we tax the people of the town, we are not asking for charitable contributions, we are actually taking their money, and they have a rightful expectation that we will use that money to benefit everyone in the town. And this is a program that's aimed at helping a few of the people in the town, and a few who have distinguished themselves by not being able to behave in a manner that's acceptable to society. But that being said, it's hopeful that if they are able to turn the course for a few of these kids, it would benefit the people in the town overall by reducing the number of kids we have to send to prison, and by reducing the damage that they may be doing by their miscreant activity. And therefore, I give my very tepid approval. I am aware that this is, this motion is to apply for a grant, and the grant is a matching grant, which means that town funds will also be invested into the program, matching those, at least matching those of the state grant. But that's, I think that the program needs improvement, and it needs justification on a better level.
Director Fondulis, did you have any comments you'd like to make, or?
Well, I think it certainly is, I'd like the opportunity to address your concerns, but in a setting where the counselors could join me, and we could really give you, or anyone who's interested, a much better overview of what we do and how we do it. So I throw that out as an invitation to certainly connect with me, and we can set up a time, and we could do that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Because I think the counselors would like an opportunity to go into much greater detail with you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2018-0043, the Department of Education Youth and Family Services Funding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passed unanimously. So we are on to 2018-0044, the Department of Education Youth Services Enhancement Grant. Councillor Perry? Yes. Councillor Schmidt read the last one.
You're right.
Unless it's a choose-not-give.
I'll let somebody else read it. Go ahead.
Councillor Morosik? Thank you.
Department of Education Youth Service Enhancement Grant. Authorizing the Town Manager or his designee to apply for the State of Connecticut Department of Education for fiscal year ending 2019 Youth Service Bureau Enhancement Grant Program Funding. Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Education offers Youth Service Bureau Enhancement Grant Programs, funding to municipality-based Connecticut Youth Services Programs for supplies and related expenses connected with programs and activities which directly and indirectly benefit Groton youth and families in areas such as youth enrichment outreach programs, general support, and positive youth development. And whereas Groton Human Services has demonstrated its success in providing youth enrichment outreach programs, general support, and positive youth development, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Manager, John M. Byrd, or his designee, is authorized to apply for and contract the State of Connecticut Department of Education, DOE, for fiscal year 19 Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program, funding in the amount to be determined by the Department of Education. I so move.
I second. Moved by Morosik, seconded by Franco. Is there any discussion?
The comments I made for the last motion will be used for this one as well, and I also will give my tepid endorsement to this motion.
So noted. Anything else? All right, seeing none, 2018-0044, Department of Education Youth Services Enhancement Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-0045, Personnel and Appointments Committee, 2018 Regular Meeting Schedule. Councillor Parker?
Resolution approving revised 2018 Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee Regular Meeting Schedule. Be it resolved that the Town Council hereby amends Resolution 2017-0262 and approves the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee Regular Meeting Schedule for the remainder of 2018 as follows. Tuesday, March 20, 2018, a special meeting. Tuesday, April 17, 2018. Tuesday, May 15, 2018. Tuesday, June 19, 2018. Tuesday, July 17, 2018. Tuesday, August 21, 2018. Tuesday, September 18, 2018. Tuesday, October 16, 2018. Tuesday, November 20, 2018. And Tuesday, December 18, 2018. All meetings begin at 5:30 PM in Community Room One in Town Hall Annex 134 Groton Long Point Road on the third Tuesday of each month. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Morosik. Any discussion on this item?
Just a quick note.
Councillor Heed, yes.
Already mentioned, we've already agreed. This is because we received an application, and if we can meet in between the Town Council meetings, then it can be on the next Town Council agenda, so it just speeds up the process of getting people who have applied for boards and commissions onto those boards and commissions, because they're not waiting as long.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll take a vote on 2018-0045, the Personnel and Appointments Committee, 2018 Regular Meeting Schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are on to 2018-0048, Town of Groton Tax Incentive Financing Policy. Councillor Franco?
Resolution to adopt a tax-
Resolution to adopt a tax increment financing policy. Whereas, the town of Groton has completed a town-wide market analysis with a recommendation to research and implement tax incremental financing in Groton. And whereas, TIF is used to invest in economic development by allowing some or all public and/or private costs associated with the development to be financed over time by increases in the property tax revenues that are generated by the new development. And whereas, the town of Groton Development of Planning and Development Services has developed a policy which outlines the process of planning for, reviewing, approving, and implementing TIF districts. And whereas, the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Committee recommends passing the TIF policy and Planning Commission endorsed to the TIF policy. And whereas, the TIF... I mean, I'm... the Tax Increment Financing Policy will be a new economic development tool to encourage development and redevelopment in planned-targeted areas in Groton. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council hereby adopts the Tax Increment Financing Policy attached. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Excuse me. Any discussion on this? Counselor Overy.
I just want to add that I did speak with the planner, and because I had a concern about areas not being covered, and he assured me that the final resolution will have the fact that if there is an area that wants to apply, and it would fit the criteria, that the town would most definitely look at it. So I want to give assurance to the entire town that there is opportunity.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. 2018-0048, Town of Groton Tax Increment Financing Policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counselor Heed, 2018-0052, scheduling of a public hearing on the lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire District.
Therefore be it resolved, scheduling a public hearing on the lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire Department... sorry, I'm reading it out forward. Resolved that the Town Council will hold a public hearing as per CGS Section 7-163E on a proposed lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to the Paquonic Bridge Fire District on Tuesday, March 27, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at Town Hall Annex, Community Room 1. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Heed, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on the scheduling of the public Seeing none. All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing on the lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire District, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0053, Referral of Lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire District to the Planning Commission under CGS Section 8-24. Counselor Overy.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for the Federal 5310 Transportation Grant to provide funds for vehicle replacement. Am I right, one?
No.
I think I missed one. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Oh, doing well tonight.
That's okay. You're good.
Referral of lease in Town Hall Annex Office Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire District to the Planning Commission under CGS Section 8-24. Resolution referring the lease of Town Hall Annex Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire District to the Planning Commission under CGS Section 8-24. Resolve that the Town Council refers the lease of office space to the Paquonic Bridge Fire District to the Planning Commission pursuant to CGS Section 8-24. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Overy and seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion about the referral of the lease? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2018-0053, Referral of Lease of Town Hall Annex Office Space to Paquonic Bridge Fire District. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0054, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310 Program Grant, Senior Center. Counselor Atwater, please.
Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for the Federal Grant 5310 Transportation Grant to provide funds for the vehicle replacement. Whereas, the Senior Center would like to apply for grant funds to support 80 percent of the cost of the replacement of a 12-passenger vehicle. And whereas, the 12-passenger vehicle scheduled to be replaced in 2019 is used for transportation of seniors to and from the center and to medical appointments, now therefore be it resolved that the town manager or his designee is authorized to apply for the Federal 5310 Transportation Grant to support 80 percent of the cost of the replacement of a 12-passenger vehicle. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Heed. Is there any discussion? I'm going to take the opportunity to, one more time, ask that staff explore the possibility of using the old van, possibly for the Thames River Heritage Park, transportation from the ferry point in the city to Fort Griswold.
Gary Schneider is having his staff put together a review of what kind of condition it's in. I'll forward that as soon as I have it.
Thank you. That would be great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2018-0054, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310 Program Grant, Senior Center. Yes, I'm sorry.
Curious, what the 20 percent... I mean, if it... what... there's a grant paying for 80. Just was it discussed in the town what the town's liability would be?
It was. I don't have that county packet with me, though.
Yes, it was. We... as I said before, we've discussed all of this.
Referral memo was in that earlier packet that gave all that.
I was under the impression that the vehicle was about $100,000 vehicle, and the town...
The map's pretty easy, though.
Just from memory, I believe our portion was something like $14,000, from memory.
You probably have it all.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-0054, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0055, Rates for Shenandoah Golf Course. Who do we leave off with? Counselor Schmidt.
Resolution setting 2018 rates for the Shenandoah Golf Course. Whereas, the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission have endorsed the changes to the fees on membership rates for the Shenandoah Golf Course for 2018. And whereas, recommendations include an increase in full-play rates and weekend tournament rates, a decrease in weekday tournament rates, and a modification to the new member recruitment practice, now therefore be it resolved that the municipal golf course rates for 2018 shall be the rates as attached to this resolution. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Moravsek. Any discussion on setting the rates for the golf course? Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-0055, Rates for Shenandoah Golf Course, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. 2018-0057, E-Recording Documents and Records. Counselors of Perry.
Resolution authorizing the town manager or his designee to enter into an agreement with CSC and COTT Systems. Whereas, E-recording technology provides a fast, efficient, and transparent process for recording land records. And whereas, the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services is in the process of finalizing the functionality that will allow deeds and real estate conveyance taxes to be recorded electronically, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council does hereby authorize the town manager or his designee to enter into the Memorandum of Understanding with CSC and COTT Systems to facilitate electronic recording of land records in the town of Groton. I so move.
Second. Moved by Zepary, seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion regarding the grant? Not the grant, I'm sorry. The agreement with the two companies. Seeing none. All those in favor of 2018-0057, E-Recording of Documents and Records, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. And we are back to... or at the end. 2018-0058, Historic Documents Preservation Grant, fiscal year ending 2019. Counselor Moravsek, please.
Historical Documents Preservation Grant, fiscal year 2019. Resolution authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver a contract for a Historic Documents Preservation Grant. Whereas, the town of Groton is benefited by the continuance of the Historic Document Preservation Program, which will be enabled and enhanced by the grant funding, now therefore be it resolved that John Burke, town manager of the town of Groton, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the state... with Connecticut State Library for a Historical Documents Preservation Grant. I so move.
Second. Moved by Moravsek and seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the preservation We want to preserve our documents unlike the Nathan Hale Diary, which is a travesty. Call for a vote on 2018-0058, Historic Documents Preservation Grant, fiscal year ending 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Is there any other business under Item 10? Counselor Overy.
I don't know how to do... what's the appropriate manner, but I'd like to have a referral to review the shortage for the dockage for the water taxi that has apparently come up with the military, the Navy, and so that we could learn more about it and see what maybe we could do to help.
Could you put something in writing, please, and get it to the town manager so that he can... you don't have to do it this evening, but just that...
Sure.
Have it for his records. Anything else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Moravsek. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned.